We did contact all these school board candidates. We did get in contact from these three, obviously they showed up. Kevin Krug and Carol Lee did response today. They were busy tonight, they couldn't make it. But he gained response from Mara and Jared Krumenacher, or Nora Krug. So we don't know if they were going to come or not, didn't respond to our request to come. And I think they're going to show up and meet the candidates in public, so. All right. Okay, here's our guidelines for tonight. Personally, I just brought up about the cards. They're being passed around, if you want to fill them out. There won't be any questions taken from the audience, y'all, not to the candidates. If you get out of order, we ask you to obviously, you know, be respectful, be polite. We just want to talk to the candidates and see what their viewpoints are. And just get the feel for what they're for against this project. It's good that we find out and hear it from the horse's mouth. None of the candidates, we have, we have our questions written down. They weren't, they weren't given the questions prior, so they can be ready to answer the questions. We thought that wasn't fair for everybody who's going to be here. If you are interested in finding out what your taxes will go up to, if this whole project does happen. Mike Bowles is in the back, back there, he will show you what your property value is and what it would go up. So if you're interested, if you are concerned, he'll show you the facts on that. What's your property worth and what it would go up if there is an increase in taxes. Okay. Our three candidates are here. We've got April Frye, Nora Bochak, and Brennan McCracken. Okay, we're going to start off with candidates, we're going to ask, make a short statement about why you want to run again, or if you are running again. Give you three to four minutes, that's, we'll start first with April. You can start off, and you can explain your viewpoints, why you want to run for school.
Hi, I am April Frye. I am running again for reelection. I am a 1997 graduate of Northern Cambria. My husband and I, right now live in Cherry Tree. We have two kids that are in the district. Our son Nathan is a junior, our daughter Sophia is in eighth grade. For the last eighteen years, I have worked in education. The first six years, I have been, I worked at a alternative education school. That school was primarily for students who were on the spectrum, and then later turned into students who were also having behavioral issues that could not be in their home school district. Our goal there is to try to get behaviors under control so we could then put them back in their district to be successful. For the last twelve years, I have worked at St. Francis University. I work in the Department for Academic Success and Retention. Our department in schools are basically a lot of student support services academically. My primary job at the university is to help students with disabilities. So students coming to the university that might have had an AP or 504 plan that needed academic accommodations due to a disability, that is something that I handle within my role at the university. There's many reasons I guess I'm running. Two is education. I could think I could bring a wealth of information working at a university for twelve years. And when I say that, please know that I find huge value in the technical schools. And so I'm very pleased with some of the changes that the school board did over the last four years to send our students to go tech a year sooner as sophomores now instead of studying as juniors. I, I, I think the trades are a huge asset to the students in our district. The other part, I always had a strong concern for the safety of our school district. That's, that high school, they buzz you in and you could really go wherever you wanted to if you had some ill intentions towards our students. And I think the school has taken some really good steps over the last few years with, we can have a drop box now for the students. So students, if you're like my kids, and you forget your shorter paths for practice and you're having to run things up to the school, now they don't have to let student or all the people into the district are into the building. They can put it in the drop box and if they kind of along. So those are two issues that I was strongly concerned about or, you know, spoke to my heart and my reasons for running. So I will pass it on to Nora.
Good evening, I am Nora Bochak, and I'm a transplant donor. I am a proud daughter of a U.S. Air Force veteran. I was born and raised on the Air Force bases. The house that I currently live in is the sixteenth house I've lived in in my life. I've lived here since 1999 when we built our house. And hometown, when my dad retired, it moved to the Huntington area. So Huntington is what I consider home because I've had too many jobs. That's kind of where I base. But I am now Northern Cambria proud, to the point that last week's volleyball game was against Huntington. I was the Bearcat that day. I was the Bearcat. And I said we're Northern Cambria because I am NC proud. And I only want the best for this school and district. I have served on this board for eight years. It has been tumultuous more often than not. I think that we have potential to make it a good board, a school board, a board without agendas, personal agendas. I chose to run again because I want for the best for our kids. I have a daughter in the school district, she is a senior. And she is also, she killed me for saying this, but my daughter has a learning disability. And so we have go through a whole IP system, which, and that's an individualized education plan. She was identified with a learning disability by the graciousness of Northern Cambria teachers. And throughout the years, we've had nothing but wonderful teachers, some of which are in this room right now, help her. To the point that she is now treasurer of the National Honor Society because of these good people and the work they've done. When I feel that our district is threatened in any way, shape, or form, I'm going to stand up and fight for it. Because our kids deserve that, our staff deserve that. I want desperately for this community to move ahead. I've had this conversation with a lot of people. In all the communities that I've lived in, I have never lived in a community that has been so divided on so many things. Someone comes up with a good idea, everybody says the town's dying, and somebody comes up with an idea that let's make it better. And instantaneously, somebody over here goes, it's not going to work, let's not do that. We need to do it this way. And we constantly butt heads. We really need to put that away, and we need to work. Education, a school, is the keystone of a community. And when you build a strong keystone, you build a strong community. I want to be on the board for the kids. And that's all I have to say.
That's our call. My name's Brennan McCracken. I'm a 99 graduate from Northern Cambria School District. And a 2001 graduate from Triangle Tech. I have a strong background in, in the trades. I've been married for nineteen years to my wife, Kim. My man of faith, I have three daughters. One graduated from Northern Cambria, currently a freshman, my own wishes. One's a freshman at Northern Cambria, and one's a junior at Northern Cambria. I've been a volunteer and active in our community for nineteen years since my daughter started in school. I've coached a lot of the girls here at softball. Ten years I've been at the rec volunteering. Last year, I was a volunteer for our softball team, unpaid volunteer. And six years, my wife's had me at the prom chaperoning. I mean, everything I'm asked for, I do. I deliver pizzas for the powder puff game. I'm always willing to support our community. And my reason for running is I was late campaigning. So that's why I'm running as a running. But I, I felt there was a direct threat to our school, to our community, with the people on the ballot. I mean, I personally know some of them. I know, I've spoken to them about this, and I feel it's a direct threat. But those five candidates, one who has spoken that she would like to see our school shut down, that, that empowered me to put my name out there and sit here today. And that, that is why I'm here, one hundred percent. I have no other, I would love to support my community further. I, I, I wrote down a lot of things, but that is the number one reason, is I feel threatened. And I, I would love to support my community as much as possible. I believe this is the best avenue that I have to stand up and fight for our kids in Northern Cambria School District. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to some of our questions now. We were going to start with the background reasons for seeking election. All three of you basically touched base on all of those. So we're going to move on to the next section that we had made up. Education issues and needs. April, you're going to start first. What are some of the strengths of which you're proud? Let me begin, what are the three or three strengths of which our district can be proud of? And where do you see these strengths, and where do you see weaknesses? And if you're reelected, what can you do to possibly change if there are weaknesses and continue with the strengths?
So I think I kind of touched upon some of them. And I can't remember quite when it happened. I think it was actually, it would have been my son's sophomore year. It was the first group of sophomores that we provided the opportunity to start VOTAC. The reason why is because we realized there was an opportunity that the students were missing by only getting two years of VOTAC. A lot of them weren't, were unable to earn a certification, not having been there for three years. And I will say that that was completely a board unanimous decision. I don't think that there was one person that didn't vote in favor of sending our, all of our students. So everybody who's currently sitting on the board sees the importance of education at our VOTAC. So that is something I think that we're doing really well. Our numbers, I actually jotted that down. Our numbers from 2022, we had forty students that we sent to VOTAC. And in 2023, we have sixty-five students now at VOTAC. So I, I think that's awesome. I think it speaks to the needs of our students. They're telling us that they're really interested in the trades, and I think it's something that we need to continue to support as a district. On the flip side of that, for the students who are interested in going to school, the district is really looking at implementing more AP courses, more college and high school credits available to our students. It really does give some students an advantage when they're going to school. It maybe gets some of their prerequisites out of the way. It could let them double major, still completing that degree in four years. It could let them pick up a minor. So it really just gives them more opportunities to do something in those four years with their education. I think that's something that we, as a district, once again, I think when we were discussing it, everybody who's currently sitting on the board, that was something they were in favor of. Other things that I think we're doing very well, obviously our TSA is a huge factor in our district. It's been very successful for as long as I can remember. More recently, we started our KidWing project. We started Power Pittsburgh. I think we're in our second year. I saw the honors in here, the kids are very involved in all of those areas, and they do a fantastic job. And that goes to the credit of Sarah Jason Klein, goes to the credit of our administrators who support it, and, and the teachers the whole way through that helped these kids get to this point where they can be successful with these competitions. So those are the areas that I think that we're doing extremely well academically. Things that I think we have to look at, I, I know it's been brought up about SAT scores. And, and I know that it's something that the school is also taking very seriously. They are looking at SAT scores, assess from a whole, as a district, compared to what our high school grades look like and seeing what the difference is. Where do we need to implement more rigor in the classroom? What can we do to provide the teachers with support to get our kids up to that next level? But I want to make it very clear that SAT scores are just one piece of a student's academic record. There could be numerous reasons why a student might not be performing well on their SATs. Most universities around us, and probably nationwide, have gone to test optional. So many students are applying to universities without even having to submit their SAT scores anymore at this point. There are very specific programs, like I can speak to St. Francis. If you want to apply to our Physicians Assistant Program, yes, we are still requiring SAT scores, and we still have a minimum requirement for you to meet in order to get to that program. But there are a lot of other programs throughout our university and throughout others surrounding universities that are not even requiring those anymore. So I think it's just, yes, it's one, a snapshot of a person, of one of our students' educational records. So I just want to keep that in mind. PSSA scores, once again, I think is another good assessment, just to kind of see where we're at. We are doing very well compared to all the schools in our district. There were two areas, I think recently we were shared information. Maybe one grade in math from last year, two, two and a half, one in ELA. So they're looking just at those class specifics, implementing programs that we can get to those students to get them where they need to be. But school, district wide, we are doing very, very well in our state assessments. So I hope you heard of the positive things that I feel that we are doing well in our district. We have amazing teachers. It's just giving them the supports that they need. And I guess like the one thing that we could improve on, if we're looking at anything, in my opinion, would just be trying to figure out where we're going wrong to link the SAT scores to maybe the, the scores that they were seeing in their classes.
April covered a lot of things. I think that strengths are the amount of opportunities that we provide our kids. Our kids are doing astronomical things, like she mentioned TSA, KidWing. You know, we had, we had a group go and watch open heart surgery. We'd had a group go up to do boys to one of the mechanics in place and looked how to build their engines and things like that. We have a group looking at airplane and aerodynamic things. We have so many opportunities for these kids, or we're taking them out and letting them experience things that aren't just happening in the classroom. We have a lot of dedicated staff that put a lot of effort into getting these kids to these adventures in learning. And we're very proud. They, they've given us a recognition, you know, she mentioned our TSA. Our TSA is nationally recognized. It's brought a lot of pride to our community. It's gotten bigger and bigger. I've had the privilege of helping judge TSA a couple of times. These kids are amazing, and our kids keep up with all the kids. We keep up with the kids out of state colleges that are the sons and daughters of college professors in the engineering department. Our kids are neck and neck right there, and it gives you such pride. We have providing the courses, the AP courses, the VOTAC courses. The opportunities are endless. We have a ma- major strides in our social, emotional support in our district. With the pandemic and the loss of a year of education, our kids have suffered. There's no one in this room that doesn't realize that, you know, we've had a big cluster of suicides, adult and children, in our community. That speaks volumes as to what is going on. The school has taken steps. We have a social worker. We have a psychologist. Providing extra support. We, when we've been in times of trauma, we've recruited and have people come in from outside agencies. We still have some that are still providing services on a weekly basis to our children. Our biggest strength is staff. The Northern Cambria teachers and support staff are the finest. They, they give, they don't just do it for, you know, beginning of the day to the end of the day. You know, at any given time, you'll see them at your school, you'll see them at community events, working things. We have a great staff, and they can only help us to build a better school district. Weaknesses, like April mentioned, our scores. But we are making efforts that, you know, in the past few years, we've really worked on mapping out our curriculums. So instead of, you do one year of algebra, and then there's a drop, and you take trade. Now you go from algebra one to algebra two, but then all the way down to elementary schools, they build upon it. What is taught in first grade, it just flows right into what's taught in second grade. They don't have a lot of time where they have to go back and relearn things. They've got it, they're mapped out the curriculum so it flows. A weakness, I, I came from a corrections background. I have twenty-five years in Pennsylvania State Adult and Juvenile Corrections experience. So I'm always various concerned about security. Our buildings definitely could use enhancement. The high school, what April said, we can, you can in through the doors. You, you have free range, you can run anywhere in that school. And hopefully somebody could hook you up and identify where you're at. Because otherwise, it's a maze. Probably our biggest weakness has been, in my tenure at least, the lack of consistent leadership. We have gone through superintendents and principals went water in some cases. And having sat on the board for eight years, I'm going to assume some blame for that because I think that some of the inability of board members to work with, not, sorry. Inability to work with our superintendents, instead of insisting that they follow, instead of respecting their years of education. We have a lot of folks on the board who have no managerial experience, and I think that's a fault because it's the first time that they have the opportunity to manage, and it goes to their head. And they don't value the person that we hired to do the job. I think if we can keep our staff, our administrators, we're doing some good things, we have some great ideas. We just lost one of our principals to Indiana because they are far more resourceful or not resourceful. Their economics are greater. They gave a almost a $20,000 raise to go there. We can't compete with them. But it says a lot that they came looking for our principal. I tell you, we have some high quality folks working here. We just need to make sure that we keep them here. Thank you.
Since you're running for school board, we're going to ask you a different question because these two have seen us switch, and I've talked about your experience.
Yeah, I can't follow.
Our question be, if you're elected, what would be the goals you'd like to accomplish sitting on the school board that would benefit the district?
Me, my background's different. I, I went to the technical school, and I'm always a volunteer in fabrication, that's why I have an associate's degree. I had my own business for years, I sort of priorship. I, I let that go to, to raise my family, which is most important. And after that, I went to Oklahoma City Generator Station. I was in a cool place in there for a while. And then for the last twelve years, I'm currently making supervisor at Oklahoma Energy Station. So I have a strong value for those reasons, I'd say. And I would like to see more lifestyle classrooms. And kids geared towards apprenticeship programs, you know, they, they were locked out. The, the trade school rounds are great. It's done a lot for me in my life, and I think I do very well. And I have opportunities to work here as well as anywhere else in the country. I chose to stay here with my wife. My wife works in this school. She has the opportunity to lead the district for $20,000 more. And her love for our school and community has kept her here. And that's, that's exactly why I'm here, running for the same values, the same thing. And that's, that's all I could offer for the school is, you know, those, those things. And, you know, I just, I have a different background. I don't have an education background like April does, so. Like, grounds of maintenance, more Mirey, my facility, but, yeah, that's, that's all of that.
Okay, Nora, we're going to start with you this time. Our next question be, what do you believe are the most important characteristics of an effective school board? Or an effective school board member?
The ability to work with others. To lead agendas at the board, and work for a common goal. Not always agreeing, don't have to always agree. But we have to respect one another, and we have to work together. We have to realize that we took a lot of time and energy to hire the people that we hired, and we need to trust in their abilities. We don't need to dictate to them, we need to learn from them. When we have issues, we need to address it and ask for input. Not try to pass down the nix as to this is what should happen. Very few people that settle on the school board actually come from an education background. I started with it, I mean, I, I, I do have my degree. I know I don't want prisons, I know I don't hire corrections officers, have I learned from other people's back? I'm not trained to be the school principal or school superintendent. I don't have that life experience. I don't have experience with schools, being a student. So I mean, I need, we need to respect that the people that have been in the field know what they're doing. We don't understand, we need to ask, not pass judgment.
We're going to move to you, Brennan. Remember the question?
Oh, no, I just thought that differently.
Oh, no, we go right back to what we asked. Nora was, what do you believe are the most important characteristics of an effective school board or an effective school board member?
Honest communication. Honest. Being able to say what you believe is the foundation to win. Go with majority, and you stand up for what you believe is important value. Being able to make hard choices, because all the choices in school are. Somebody asked me. I think communication is the key. Being able to work in a group. I mean, majority's fifty percent plus one, so you're not always going to agree. The board is nine members. Five's the majority, if that's the vote. You know, we all have to get on board and go that direction. And we often work collaboratively, but I said we, but they, as a group. And I believe that's, that's something that needs, needs help with on our board there now. That's all.
April, you can finish up now.
Okay. I, I have said multiple times, being on the school board is one of the most, I, I don't even know how to describe it. If, if you're somebody who's like very strong in what you do in your, in your job, and then you get, you're on the board, and it's just baptism by fire. I mean, the first day that you're on there, you take all, both, you're voting on items, and you have, you really have no idea how really things work. You're just learning on the job. Even with somebody with, like, I have a lot of years of background in education. It, I was like floored that I had to start making these decisions. And it's, you start to feel the weight of that on your shoulders, how important these decisions are. And it's okay not to know everything. It's okay to, we have Pennsylvania School Board Association, that is a very good resource for us. We have the other board members, we have our superintendents. We have people that we can lean on to help make, to get information and learn how to move forward together as a board. Being respectful, communication. I know for myself, I have failed at that miserably at times, and I will be the first to mention, or to own up to that. There have been times that I have acted in ways that I am not proud of. And it's because sometimes you feel so passionately about something, and there's nine other people on the board that might feel just as passionately about the opposite view that you have. So working together as a team is very important. And to me, attendance, if you're an elected official, be there. I miss, I can't tell you how much of the stuff of my kids that I have chosen to miss because I'm an elected official. There are times that all of us cannot be there, and that's one hundred percent understandable. There, you're going to have, things in your life are going to happen that you can't be there. But attendance is key, and if you can't be there, we are a group of nine. We are counting on everybody to be there, to make a decision, to move forward together. That's the other piece that, so those are my. That's the other piece that, um, so those are my, those are what I think is important to be a good board member.
Okay. Next question. If you're elected, what leadership responsibilities do you bring to the board? And it's a two-part, and the other part I'm gonna throw it out there, it's a whole different topic. If you're elected, like, what school activities or, um, community activities are you involved in? And if you are elected, how much time are you gonna be willing to give to the school board if you get them to the term? Um, so what leadership responsibilities do you bring to the school board if you're elected?
Well, that's not the reason why I was able to run as a candidate, because with my deposition, I am able to make every board meeting and dedicate the time needed to the school. So that I can do. And leadership responsibilities, I, you know, I just took on a leadership role, which is really difficult, my position, because I'm taking on union workforce, who I was part of for twelve years, and now I'm their supervisor. And that's like the toughest job ever. You know, if I left and went to a different building and took on new people, I'd be fine. Working with that group, it was so hard. And I'm still struggling nine months into it. So yeah, it's gonna take me time if, if elected. But I have no problems, um, taking on leadership responsibilities. And the second part of his question was, uh, what was it? I mean, the community involvement. I've been part of our, you know, like I said before, I've been to six proms, I'll probably be to six or seven more proms. I will chaperone everything that isn't easy when they don't have chaperones. I stay after every volleyball game and tear down the concession stand, go get ice. I've been doing that for seven years and I'll continue to support wherever I need it, anywhere I need it. You know, I, I don't, I don't have any specifics as of yet, but I'm sure that there's gonna be a need for an assistant in volleyball and softball, and I'll do it with, with no questions asked. I always have, so, yeah, that's, that's all.
Once again, leadership is so bizarre on the school board because I think it's everybody's individual take on what makes a good leader. I was school board president for a year and that was very difficult. And so I try to give grace to that person now after having sat through that because it's very difficult. In my opinion, in that role, you're there to run a meeting, keep everybody on track and to keep the meeting moving on. Trying to make sure everybody stays on topic, which is quite difficult at times. Trusting your administrators is the most important thing I think you can do to show your leadership, um, getting behind them. There are ways to disagree with each other and that's fine. We all have differences of opinions and having that brings new ideas to a board. So I think it's great to share those, but there's a way to do so respectfully, um, respectfully. Yes, I, I'm at just about every meeting. I think in my four years, I've missed, I don't even know if I've missed ten, um, meetings. So I do always claim to be there. Outside of, um, my time on the board, because it's, it has taken up so much time, especially with this building project, um, I'm involved with every boosters that my kids are involved with. Football boosters is kind of my life right now. It's almost as much as a full-time job, thanks to God, to you, Karen. I'm also involved with volleyball boosters, we'll be moving on to basketball soon, and baseball. I'm sure track at some point when my daughter moves into there. And I, and I have to say how much I am, I love the arts and I was heavily involved in it, you know, growing up in my time in NC. I was also part of chorus and band in my time. I was playing sports, I was doing dance. At some point I had to make a decision and unfortunately, probably my grandmother, God love her, was so sad when I walked away from the arts and focused more on sports, but, and I would love to try to make it to more because I, these kids are doing a wonderful job. Our band sounds fantastic. It's just like, I might have a free night and I'm not at a volleyball game on Tuesdays, Thursdays and prepping for a football game on Fridays. It's nice to spend at least one or two evenings with my husband. So I am happy to support our school and all the activities as much as I can, um, if I'm reelected.
Leadership responsibilities. I take my responsibility to the board very seriously. April said it, it's a lot more than people realize. The amount of hours you spend in a board meeting is only a chunk of it. The amount of time that you spend looking at documents and researching things, that you're making informed decisions, is a big chunk. The, the communication that you're, you're reviewing to see where we're going, what we're doing, who said what, you know. I have missed very few meetings in my eight years. I have been the vice president for seven of the eight years that I've been on the board and I've ran, in some cases, probably more meetings than some presidents that didn't just make meetings. I've been through some really bad meetings. I, I had the privilege of chairing quite a few of the no mask, mask debate during COVID. Not one of my favorite times, I can tell you that right now. I think that because I do have a great deal of managerial experience, I know how to work with people and I can do it as long as the other people are willing to work with me. I don't have a very big ego. I'm really, like, probably the least competitive person you'd ever wanna meet. Like, I cheat at mini golf because it's just mini golf. As far as community efforts, most of you know my face because it's out there a lot. I have been band booster president for three years, I've been involved with band boosters for five years. The concession stand at this time of year is my life. If you'd see my dining room right now, because there's a playoff game this Friday, my dining room looks like a Sam's Club warehouse. It's filled with boxes of stuff waiting to go to the concession stand. I have been involved with every organization within the school as my kid goes through. PTO, which is only in the elementary and middle school. I was just at Pumpkin Patch, my kid's a senior, I went down to Pumpkin Patch because I, I coordinated for lots of years and I've got a real soft spot for that and photos with Santa and everything else. I just, I love those events. I have been a Girl Scout leader in this community. I have, you know, I'm athletically challenged, really, really a lot. I coached basketball, assistant coached basketball one year in elementary school. Wasn't a good choice. I am volunteer for the library, my church, I judge TSA, First Lego League. I have had the great privilege of attending, chaperoning all sorts of trips that the school has gone from little kid trips to, um, National Honors, history trip to the Holocaust Museum. I was able to go with the, and chaperone on that. I like this community and I like being involved in this community.
Okay, we'll read some of the questions that were given to us from the audience. It's a two-part question here. We're gonna start with the first one. The question came was, what are your honest thoughts of the current condition of the high school right now?
We, we went up and toured the, 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 the school, I don't know. I was up there twice. I mean, I'm in the high school a lot for boosters, um, and I was in the school a lot for when I was helping to run elementary basketball league. It's, it's, it's terrible. I, I don't know what other way to say it. It's, it's just so bad. We, um, if, I don't know if you've ever been in our school, but the, the problem that is, that I, I can't stand is, um, the wood shop and the metal shop area, there are prison facilities that have to be better than those two classrooms. And if you have a student with a disability that needs to utilize our elevator, the way it works is it's on that side, it's on, um, if you're standing in front looking at the building, it's on the far left. So that goes the whole way down to the, to the bottom floor of the school. If you need to get over to, um, where the, I'm gonna say home app, and I know that's wrong. No, it's not. Spanish, but that's, yeah, family consumer signs. Didn't wanna offend anybody, most home app people. And the art room, you have to go down through the shop, through the metal room to try to get over there and it is terrible. I would not want to have a kid in that school district, if you were in a wheelchair or in crutches, um, trying to navigate that school system. There was a time I was also, uh, running an elementary basketball league on a Saturday and we had all the doors shut to the school. So the kids were just supposed to be in the gym side. Well, a bunch of little kids from Penn's Manor went down, got through the doors and they're running through the hallways of the high school and I hear them coming back screaming and I'm like, what is going on? And they're like, miss, there's water coming from the whole, this one classroom, you can just see it pouring out of the roof. And I'm like, what? So I'm like, show me. So they take me through the second or third floor of this school and something broke and water was just pouring out through the computer lab. We were trying to do the computers to save them, trying to call somebody at the weekend, somebody, they were down at the elementary, middle school coming up to help us. And that wasn't the first time that this has happened. It's happened a lot in there. The gymnasium is a bazillion degrees. I can't even, that doesn't even make sense, but like, we have volleyball games going on and, and right now and it is, it is so warm that once we decided to cancel a junior high game because we were so worried about the adversity in JV games, how hot it was. There's no air conditioning there. It is just as hot in the wintertime. We're playing basketball games in the winter and we have all the doors open because of the way that the heating system works. I love that high school. I had great memories in that high school, I had great memories in that gymnasium. But the amount of money that was gonna take to fix that was gonna be like eighteen million dollars and I'm not even quite sure we would see any of it because of so much of the structural stuff that needs fixing it, from the boiler to the air conditioner. Windows and doors, those are so bad, we just got a grant for some of those. So I have great memories. My, my son has great memories of being in there, my daughter will have some great memories there, I, I'm, I'm sure as well, but it's just atrocious. I, I had a girlfriend purchase line come in a few years ago before I was even on the board and she's like, I honestly can't believe this still looks like this and you've not done anything. And that's embarrassing. Like, there was no pride in what we've done to keep that, our buildings up. And our kids and our teachers, their community deserves better than that. Thank you.
Those of you that are in my age bracket that attended that school and looked at those windows, those are still the same windows that are in that school. They've never been replaced. At one point they built a entrapment, I don't know, they, they covered part of the window and put some insulation in that. But the window is still there, they just covered up part of it to try to make it a little bit more efficient. The school is absolutely not efficient. It's really, really hot or really, really cold and it can be that in one day. My kid will come home and she'll have a sweatshirt on and like a tank top underneath it. In one class she has to wear the tank top and in another class she has to wear the sweatshirt. And there's a smell that has been coming up for years and we just have never been able to rectify where this smell comes from, but there are days when it smells like a sewage plant in that school. And the kids will complain, the teachers will be complaining about the smell, the heat, everything. The plumbing for the most part is built into the cinder block walls, so you do have a problem, you have to cross out cinder blocks to get to the plumbing. When you look at the floor tiles in the hallways, those are asbestos floor tiles. The piping that runs through the ceilings is all wrapped in asbestos. The stairwells are the split open stairwells, which are safety, or hazard. After telling you this, we, people talk about kids being embarrassed. For number nineteen, Northern Cambria has the honor of hosting the auditions for the District Band. District Band is comprised of Blair County, Cambria County, Bedford County, and Somerset County. These are the best kids out of four counties coming to our school to audition. Because the pending construction was decided that we needed to do it at the high school. I was there and they were told that we were doing auditions in the high school. There were kids near tears begging, please, can't you do it in the middle school because this is too embarrassing. It broke my heart that these kids are bad in areas in the school, that they were like, see if some other school wants to do it. Because they don't want to bring the kids to our school. Because they go to those schools, they go to Richland, they go to Westmore, they go to these schools and they come back, like, did you see? It's hard. Things are heavy.
I couldn't agree more. She's right, it is sewer gas. That's, that's, that's a sewer stack that's sheared off inside a block wall. And when the wind blows in the wrong direction and it's down draft up on the roof, it blows the sewer gas down on the side of our building. You've gotta be kidding me. And we can't repair it unless we start busting out block walls. And the school is full of asbestos. And I do know the cost of, of baiting asbestos and lead paint that's inside the school. So to do construction, you gotta bait asbestos, you gotta bait the lead paint. You first gotta sample a test and come up with a plan. You know, the, the cost for repairs is just way over the top of what it would be to just consolidate the project like, like they all were before. And yes, I, I know the windows are shot, the, the heat is so much shot. I, I agree with every single thing they say. My kids come home and complain, just as much as theirs. And my wife, who works in the nurse's office, she doesn't complain because her office is like seventy degrees, which is insanely hot, but she loves that. But it shouldn't be that hot in there. And then you go to a classroom that's sixty-two degrees because of the circulation of the steam from killer cool weather in our school that we have never updated. It is somewhat embarrassing and I believe all those issues need addressing. I couldn't agree with anything else they said. That's all I have to add.
Okay, next question. April, you'll start off first with this. What should our district be doing to address the challenges of declining or increasing enrollment in Northern Campbell School District? What should our district be doing to address the challenges of declining or increasing enrollment in Northern Campbell School District?
I said in the beginning that the school or an education system is the key center of the community. I firmly believe that. I think we need to continue to build our school and provide opportunities. If my husband and I were looking for property to build and we were thinking that we were having children and I came to visit this school versus going over and visiting Cambria Heights or Central Cambria, I would probably look at the other districts a little closer. You know, it's, it's, you know, you can't judge a book by a cover, but we all do. People would see our schools and, and may be put off by that. I think we need to continue to provide all the opportunities and publicize. We are getting better at promoting ourselves. We need to do even more in that. We need to let everyone know how good our school system is and what we can provide for kids. We have a lot of businesses in this town. I, I recently saw a number that was astronomical. I didn't realize we had so many businesses. I think that the more upper, employment opportunities come into our area, which it all falls together. You get people looking at our school, they come, they invest in it. And the more people invest in our community, the population will grow. But all the schools around are seeing a reduction of pop, pop net and, and student attendance. It's just, it's a population in this area that is shrinking. But that doesn't mean we need to shrink our But that doesn't mean we need to shrink our responsibilities to the kids that we have.
I think the enrollment is, is out of the control of the school board, but we can provide a quality education and, uh, a good school system for anybody looking at local or community. And she's, she's completely right. The, the schools around us, there are many more opportunities for people to go that direction than stop here in Northern Cambria. But you know what? I, I was told by a family member, more towns die, there's, there's nothing left here. And I asked them, show me all the empty houses. Where, where's the communities that are abandoned, you know? What, what, you see a house for sale? You have to jump on it or it gets sold immediately. Tell me I'm wrong. So how can our community die? I, I totally disagree with that. It's just, there's not as many kids in our area. And people aren't having six, seven, eight, nine kids. People are having one, two, three. Families are smaller, you know, that, that's all. Our community's still here. The people are still here. The houses are still full. And a, as long as we provide them a quality education with, you know, with the first school board and opportunity, then there, there's nothing more that we could, we could do than those things there. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, I don't have much to add upon except declining enrollment is not just a local issue in Northern Cambria. It is all of Cambria County and a lot of eastern Pennsylvania, to be quite honest with you. Um, I, I do feel like investing in our school is still, um, a duty that we're empowered to do for our students that are here, investing in our community. And I just have to say very quickly, from being on boosters for as long as I have, we have so many wonderful local businesses that give back to our community. Like you hear, like maybe you hear their names announced at football games on Friday nights, like the game ball tonight is sponsored by so-and-so. But like when you're on the end of the boosters and you're seeing how much money they're donating to every single team that we have in our district, and you know it's probably just not ours. I'm sure that they're, they're giving to other local schools too. I, I just can't say enough about, um, the local support that we get from our businesses here. Um, that's it.
Okay, next question from the crowd. Even with the tax increases, explain why you support or don't support the building plan with consolidation?
This has been, um, a very long conversation and it started before I even got on the board. There were feasibility studies done prior to beginning on the board. Uh, from my understanding of it, there was only one option given to the board at that time on how to proceed with, um, consolidation. And the board wasn't very happy with that option, so it just kind of stopped. And then it kicked itself back up somewhere, maybe the first or second year that I was on the board, we began talking about it again. After doing the study that with our architects, um, and our engineers, it, I can't honestly say that I feel comfortable dumping eighteen million dollars into that high school, knowing that we still need ten million dollars to bring everything up to where it needs to be for the elementary middle school. I, plumbing is a huge problem down at that school. I don't think that it's been taken care of or anything has been touched in since it's been built. Um, so looking at it that way, bringing it down, everybody down to the, to the school, we're gonna be saving about conservatively four hundred fifty thousand dollars closing that school down and bringing everybody else down. When I talk about safety, um, being one of my primary concerns, I feel like that is a big plus in my, my opinion. Bringing everybody down to one campus, you always have an administrator there. Um, we have our security, our, we actually, we have a borough police officer that works with the school district now. Um, so that to me makes more sense. And, and it's just in terms of finances. I just can't say that we could dump that amount of money into our high school and then turn around and have to dump money into our elementary school with the population that we're gonna have in a few years up at the high school. When, when we were given both, all the options, that's the one that made most sense for us. Um, after that, we were given the option to look at the size of the addition that we wanted to build and the prices from that. Um, I think everybody at the beginning was in agreement, uh, trying to go the middle of the road. And I think what we ended up was towards the end of that. And just financially, that's what we were able to work with. Um, you know, Penn's Manor does it. Um, Harmony School District does it. Everybody's one campus. We're not the first school to try this. I think, uh, a lot of board members went to Penn's Manor and visited them, talked with them about how it worked for them. And Penn's Manor had nothing but great things to say about their setup and how well it works with high school kids getting able to go down and work with the younger kids and how much the younger kids like it and they look up to those kids. So, uh, for me, that was the only, the only option that I could go with. A lot of people have said that we need to treat the school like a business. And my response to that is it's not a business. We do not provide a service or produce a product that brings in a revenue. We cannot, we don't bring in income. The only income that comes into us is spent and it comes from tax dollars, state, federal monies. I was on the board when we looked at a consolidation or project earlier and it got voted down. And then we were supposed to keep looking at it. When the ball got dropped, at the time I was like, we're just kicking the can down the road. And we're very good at kicking the can down the road. At this point, I think that we have to do something. It's not gonna get any cheaper. It is an investment. Do I feel horrible that we're raising taxes? Yes, I do. For most people, I think it's not a resorted amount. For some people, it's a clear amount and it could affect their house. We do have opportunities. There's a, uh, the social work at the school is what we want to be able to help them for financial resources. They can, we'll struggle with the taxes. A lot of people that I've talked to didn't even realize the last tax increase was in their, yeah. It really wasn't that big for a lot of people. The school needs to be fixed. I, I love the idea that we all can have our own roof. It will allow us to work together. We won't have teachers, librarians going back and forth between buildings, between campuses. And, you know, if you don't know, we actually have to pay them a lot. It should go back and forth a hundred and much, but that's an expensive one, yeah. I am in favor of the consolidation. I've looked at it a lot of different times, prayed over it a lot of different times. And I truly feel that this was in the best interest of the school, district, and community.
I agree with, with both of them as well. Um, I believe the board approached it with the, you know, the thing went down the right avenue. With the feasibility study and tax increases, you know, it, it comes with the territory where we're at. You know, we let, we let the high school go to this shape it's in right now. And as John Lucino once said within a meeting, it's going to be uninhabitable. And that, that's getting, I was like, if there's gonna be a day where they're gonna call us because we can't, it's that kind of shape. And, you know, I, I do, my background, my knowledge, I've looked at the school, had, had an idea of what numbers. And I agree with the board's decision to, to consolidate. I, I believe that's the, that's the avenue for our community, for our school district. And the safety, I agree, is huge down in the middle school, you know, our, our, our high school is. Safe is not what they've said before. So I totally agree with that and I am on board with that. I think financially, it is the right way to go.
Okay, next question. If the contracts are signed for the new project, there are rumors that some of the candidates plan to shut the building project down and collect. If this is true and they succeed, there will be a financial penalty to the school district and its taxpayers. I guess it's not good to the two sitting board members right now. You'd have to answer that question.
Once, if the contracts being signed, if the new board would come in and vote to not go through the building project, I've been told through legal counsel that it would not be a recommendation that the legal counsel would make because it would resort in fines and potential lawsuits from the various contractors. Um, if the decision was made on down, we still have two more years of increased millage. If those would not happen, then it would be difficult to repay the bonds, which could result in a default in the district. Because of those negative consequences, you know, from a legal aspect, it would not be legitimately recommended to take that action.
All right, before we wrap it up, Mike, do you wanna come up and explain taxation? If anybody has any questions, you can explain it real quick here, what they could do. He has a ability right now. If anybody has any questions on what their taxes would increase to if this project goes through, which you'd be looking at, he can just give you a nutshell. I'll give you the microphone, the microphone. Just explain it real quick. If you're curious, just spend a couple minutes, Mike's all it'll take. He can tell you what you're looking at, factual.
Um, if anybody has any questions about the tax, uh, increase, I'm happy to talk to them back there. I, I think we've covered a lot. If on Facebook, I'm sure a lot of you've seen the post. Uh, the big thing I wanted to make sure we clarified is I think what the burden is gonna be on people's been, I would say vastly exaggerated by some individuals. Uh, we've talked about it's gonna be approximately a twelve percent increase from, uh, the increase we just did, and then there's two further increases. So right now, the millage is at sixty. Uh, there's two more increases, one for another two and a half mills, and then one planned projected for another one point eight seven mills. So that would be a final, uh, projection of sixty-four point three seven mills. And the way that you can calculate what your burden's gonna be, you could pretty much take your current assessment, uh, divide by a thousand. So if you have an assessment of, say, thirty thousand, uh, the averages for, to give everybody an insight of what the average is for the school district, it's around fifteen thousand. So if we just take the fifteen thousand, divide by a thousand, uh, that's fifteen. So you're gonna pay fifteen dollars for every mill that the taxes are. So if we've got two mills, that means your taxes are gonna go up thirty dollars a year. Um, if we've got four mills, then it would be, uh, sixty dollars. So the way you really figure it out is basically you take your assessment, divide by a thousand, and whatever that is, that's your dollars per mill that you're gonna pay. Um, just so you're aware too, one thing that I think personally has not been disclosed to a lot of the public is that there was four increases by some candidates that are currently running for the board. So a lot of you probably didn't realize, but from two thousand fourteen to two, two thousand twenty, your millage actually went up eight mills. And I don't think we ever heard an outcry from the public. Uh, we didn't, we weren't invited to the board meetings to say, hey, could, could we discuss this? We'd like you to put on a form and have a vote about it. We don't agree with it. There was actually eight mills that were increased on a previous board. So I think it's, it's been a little bit, we're not trying to deflect what we're doing. We know that there's gonna be a burden on individuals within the, 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 uh, boroughs and the townships. But I think to look at it from a reasonable standpoint, I think if you think about it from maybe even a tax perspective, typically, the more you make, the more you're paying taxes based on your income. So the assumption is if you make more money, typically you're gonna pay more tax. So I, I think it's fair to make an assumption, and it is an assumption, but I'm gonna assume, if you have more land, more value, then the chances are you're gonna have a bigger burden and chances are you can likely afford that. I own hundreds of acres and three properties within this school district. So I have zero benefit from taxes going up. Uh, I've got four children in this school district. The last one's gonna graduate by virtually the time this is done, she'll have one year in the school district. So again, I have no personal benefit for this. My platform is not for a building project. Uh, I probably wouldn't have ran if I knew this building project was gonna be, is part of our, because it's been nothing but headaches. But I'll be completely honest, the reason I ran is because of education. I thought that during COVID, there was a lack of, and I don't wanna call it accountability, but a lack of students being held accountable for what was going on in classrooms. I, I was personally home for, I worked from home, been doing it for almost six years. And I watched my kids not really attend class regularly. They were sleeping, uh, somehow getting A's. And, and this isn't directed at the administration or teachers, but it was, I'm a, a parent at home and I'm accountable for my student, not necessarily the school district. So I felt that there was a huge responsibility for me to get involved and make sure that I had a say. And guess what? The first board meeting I went to, there was a, a building discussion, which was the last thing I wanted to get involved with. But you know what? Like any other agenda item, we as a, a, a school board are asked to vote and decide on things that are brought to the attention of school. Um, and this is one of the items. So I don't look at it any differently than another decision we have to make. And I feel that we've done a lot of diligence to make sure that we're in making a good decision. And yes, there is going to be a burden that's put on taxpayers. But I think again, that if you look at the fact that there's gonna be a larger burden on some individuals than others, the question would become, if somebody makes more income, do they have a higher tax burden than those that makes less? Yes. So I would say that if you have a higher assessed value, you're going to have a higher burden. But in essence, chances are you probably absorb that burden. So, uh, I think you all know my position on it. I, I, I don't feel that I'm biased. I have taken all the facts and tried to make a good decision based on it. But if, if, again, if you have any questions about your tax, I would just ask that you come back there. I can give you virtually the exact figure of what your taxes are gonna change by. And, uh, it'll be accurate information. And I just ask you to keep your, uh, be open-minded. I feel that we've tried to be open-minded. Some people would say that we force this through. I would probably use the word balled through. I mean, this, this project's been going on for six, eight years discussion. There's a reason the tax increase has taken place over the last number of years. And it's not because the school district needed more money, it's because they're trying to build a surplus up to put away for a building project. So again, I'd like to look at it like we're following through on something that started many years ago. And, um, I hope you all can see that. And if you have questions, you know, call me, email. Oh, and it, my, my background is on an accounting by trade. Uh, I'm an MBA. And, uh, I worked at the Department of Veterans Affairs for almost twelve years. I was the CFO there for the end of my career. And then, uh, we started a, uh, hospice that we had for approximately eight years. And, uh, they were absorbed by another company. Now, that's where I'm working. I do a lot of data analysis. And, uh, I really enjoyed this. A lot of people would say like, would you do this again? I, I would. I actually enjoy. I don't shy away from, uh, discussions. I, I think that it's, it's good if we can get in a room and discuss it. I, I would hope that people could walk away and not necessarily take things personally, but look at it like an open discussion, be open-minded about it. So, uh, again, though, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop back there. I'd be happy to pull up your assessments. I have the GIS website from Cambria County open. I can pull up your property, core properties, and we can look at the assessment value. I can give you the exact amount of how your tax is gonna change. And again, if you take your current tax bill, uh, and it would have actually been last year's tax bill, it should be going up about eleven to twelve percent. But, uh, we, we just had the one increase that's gonna be a little less than that for the next projected increases. So.
I know it's fair to ask just now, but, um, with our mill increase if this project goes through, how do we compare to our neighboring school districts around us? Central Cambria, Cambria?
Yeah, I mean, millage is a very deceiving thing. You can look at other school districts and say, well, they're only at forty mills, or maybe they're eighty mills. So we could, we consider it up for discussion. Well, they're paying eighty mills. So if we're only paying sixty, we must have cheaper taxes. And that is just not the case. I mean, it's all based on the budget for the school. And it's all based on the combination of assessed values, the millage, and I know, I saw Gals here somewhere, uh, Gals. Yeah, we talked about this earlier in one of the meetings. I mean, if, if hypothetically they went through the reassessment of, of Cambria County and, uh, they say they just doubled our assessed value, so all of a sudden your assessment's gone twice. Well, we can't just all of a sudden double or reduce taxes and the school district have this abundance of funding that would come in. They would actually put the milling directly in half virtually. So your, the taxes, it's, it's a net zero effect. So it, it's all based on assessed values, but it's also based on the millage. So you can take those into account. So the school district has a budget. We have a, a number that we have to work with to, to fund the school and, uh, pay for the, obviously the expenses we have. So i- if assessments go up, millage will go down proportionally to make sure that we, we, we did not have a net, uh, extra income coming into the school. So that's kind of the answer, I guess. Catch me off guard there.
Okay, we're gonna finish it up. We're just gonna open up why you wanna run and just give your votes to go, why you wanna be reelected. I'm like, you should be the best candidate. Wish we had all of them here just to try to say a question out to everybody. But for now, can you tell us why if somebody votes for you? But for now, can you tell us why, if somebody votes for you, why it's beneficial for another gaming school district?
I feel like I probably already said that in my opening. Um, I, I'm dedicated, obviously. I, I'm dedicated to the school, I'm dedicated to the community. My, my parents live here. Um, my in-laws are just down the road there in Harmony School District. Uh, my, all of my friends are here, so I'm, I'm admitted to be here. Um, I will, I will attend, I will be fair, I try, I will promise to do better and not let my emotions get the best of me at times in board meetings. I always leave there thinking, what would my grandparents think if they would have saw me? If they liked that at that meeting, they probably would have been a little embarrassed for me. So, um, I, I try, I will promise to try to be better with that. Um, and like the taxes, I know that that's a huge issue and I'm sure that's probably the number one issue for a lot of people when they're going to be voting. And all I want is everybody to have accurate information. If at the end of the day, you have what your taxes are going to be, you have what the increase is going to be, and you still disagree with us, that is fine. What I, what I don't appreciate is just the, the numbers that I'm seeing out there and what we're approving a building project for. So we're, I'm hoping to give, I, I hope that you can also, that you can approach me, that I'm approachable. I hope that's part of my personality, that anybody could give me a call or stop me in the community and talk to me about, um, other things. And I will be happy to share what information I have with you. So, thank you.
One thing I want to add about the, the millage is that at this point, with all the construction and, and the contracts and everything, the really good news is that we are not anticipating there to be any need for any additional increases past the two remaining ones that we've already put out there. As far as why I feel I should be on the board, I care. I believe I'm fair. I will listen. I think that this community, this school, we can be something more and I'd like to be a part of that. Um, I do feel bad about raising the taxes. I wish there was another way, but there isn't. I think that having the school is going to be a true source of pride for us. I personally like Northern Cambria. You know, I never grew up in a place where, well, I mean, I grew up all over. Like when I went to kindergarten orientation, I cried. Because I was looking at the kids that my daughter's going to go to high school with and potentially will marry one of those or whatever. And that blew my mind, that she would have that bond. You got, you know, for those who feel like were born and raised here, you've had that, you've known each other forever. I never had that and I was just overwhelmed by that. This is a community that she may stay in, she may move out. We have family all over, we drop people off as we move from base to base. But we have a house that we built, that we love, that we can have forever. I will be a part of this community. And this is a way that I can give back to this community by being on this board. Thank you.
And as you can tell, um, our school board is made up of us, some very well-educated people. Financially, Mike Basil and Education April and Nora, there you go. So I have a spot that would fill with, uh, I, I'll just say that I became soft raising three daughters. I mean, I was never soft. I'm still strong, still a man, still probably a man in my house. But I have three daughters in a life. So y'all know I don't win every argument in my house either. So I'm capable of, of dealing with those things. But I, I did, I became soft. And, you know, I, I wasn't real active in high school when I was back here. And even right after, and my initial intentions was to lead this area. I mean, I, I graduated high school, gone out of Triangle Tech, got a well degree. I thought, you know what, I'm going to come and do something. I met my wife and she said, let's stay here with your kids. She, really? Really? This is not my plan. And you know what? She was wearing my clothes. But yeah, she was. It was the best choice I ever made in my life. And I developed a love for our community and our school. And, and I'm proud to be part of this community and the school and support it any way that I can. And if, if I'm elected, you know, I'll give you an honest opinion, straightforward. I won't lie, I won't force anybody to read between the lines. I won't side with whoever's on board and who was not. I'll, I'll, I'll be honest and truthful and straightforward. And I think that's something to offer the community and to our school board. And, you know, and my background in the trades, and, you know, I, I've talked to a few students actually yesterday. It was Sunday, we were at a jam and I ran into a kid who was in the, uh, IBW on his apprenticeship. Super proud, looking forward to, uh, getting through his apprenticeship program, you know, and, and there was another student that came down to paint my porch for me when he graduated high school. And I pushed him towards carpenters union. And he, he's now making six meters a year in the carpenters union. And, you know, and, and I have a background in that thing. So I have that to offer to the school and, you know, and core values and honesty. That, that's who I am, that's, that's, that's what I have to offer. Thank you.
That's it, folks. Well, thank you for coming. Appreciate you coming and supporting this meeting. If you have any questions, the, the candidate instructor, if you'd like to approach in person and ask some questions. If you folks okay with that. Then it's welcome to you guys. And last in the back, if you said, uh, question. Thanks for listening to our group, uh, Julie, your information. Take notes, let's review these questions.